Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Madam Clerk?
Sheriff Deputy Tim Gallagher and his K-9 Max.
I think we have a special guest today.
Yes. The Commissioners have a certificate of honor to present to Max. I believe Max is retiring. Would you please bring Max up?
Hey, Max. Max, we've got a certificate for you, but also a couple of doggy bombs. You get the rest.
That's an alert dog.
Yeah. He loves that. Well, Max, soon as you're done there, the certificate of honor is presented to Max, Lorain County Sheriff, K-9 Dog. On your retirement from Lorain County Sheriff's Office on December 31, 2003, we recognize your many years of service, loyalty, and companionship, and thanks to your trainer and friend, Deputy Tim Gallagher, for providing this service to the citizens of Lorain County. The certificate is presented, and I hope he doesn't take this out of my hand, by the Board of Commissioners, myself, Commissioner Blair, and Commissioner Moore. Here you go, Max. Sit. Good job, Max. Now you get a chance to retire and get some rest. Good job, Max. Okay, Madam Clerk, continue. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
John, would you explain the one, the transfer in 1997 on claimed funds paid in 1998 to the General Fund? These funds will now be an obligation of the General Fund. Would you please explain that part of it?
Sure. Good morning. My name is John Rokasi. I'm the County Budget Director, R-O-K-A-S-Y. The rule of law is that when funds become five years old in the unclaimed UTRUST accounts, they revert over to the County General Fund. Then people may still claim after five years, any funds do, in this case, from the General Fund in which it was transferred. So there is a liability, I believe, up to 18 years, from the General Fund to cover those claims that would occur.
Okay, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
I know the Board probably understands that, but for the public's information, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
No second?
Well, just a minute, I'm digging here.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye, with exceptions 1850 and 1858.
What were those?
Same for my suite.
So refresh my memory, please.
Carpet.
Okay, thank you. Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated in the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorain County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioners, we'd like to request an executive session to discuss potential new hires, ongoing contract issues, and sundry other personal things that are on the sheet. I don't think that anybody's had a chance to review it.
I haven't seen the sheet yet.
That's part of the review. It just got done, and I don't think that any of the Commissioners have had a chance to take a look at that sheet. So I think that we need to go in Exec and talk about a couple of the hirings, and definitely the ongoing labor negotiations.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Under Commissioners, Number 10, Approve Lorain County Annual Appropriation Resolution.
So moved, with the exception, I have an exception, but I'll make that after for the vote. So moved.
Do we have a document?
Commissioners, we have a document.
Well, I know, and I appreciate that, but Commissioner Vacy made a motion to approve something, and I heard that she's going to have an exception, so before I second the motion, I want to at least, I mean, I've got files, too.
I believe that what we're approving here is the annual appropriation for this coming fiscal year ending December 31, 2004. My understanding that we have forwarded copies of this annual appropriation to each Commissioner?
Now, is this something I've had last week, or is this something I should have gotten this morning?
I think it's something, an accumulation of things that we've been working on the last two weeks. We've met with each Commissioner individually and have had extensive discussions regarding the annual appropriation in 2004. I think that with minor exception, you all seem to be very, very closely aligned on the appropriation that we've submitted to you, getting along and podged through our process.
I appreciate all that, but my question about this particular piece, because this is apparently what the motion to approve is based on.
Yes, Commissioner.
Do we have copies? Did I get a copy and I haven't?
Yes, I'll give you an extra if you do need it.
Thank you.
It'll work.
I got this one, but I'm trying to find only what you had when they discussed it with me. It doesn't look like the one...
Well, that's why, is this, is this your copy? I'll give it back then. This is the copy?
Those are all extras.
Or are these, same thing that we just got, though?
I have no idea.
John?
That's it. Yeah, those came yesterday morning.
What's different from the last time we spoke, anything?
No, just the changes were incorporated, we discussed about a week ago.
Well, I will second Commissioner Vacy's motion to start the discussion. Is that fair?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Pardell, it's your pleasure, Commissioner.
I am just going to make exceptions to the discretionary spending, two items in the discretionary spending. One would be Cummins and Nelsons, because I've always felt that the county could hire an HR person for a lot less to do the negotiations than hiring the consultant. And the second one would be the Chamber. I would not be opposed to giving the Chamber something, but I would, I just can't go for
Are you going to digest a little bit of this for the benefit of the audience here? How are we going to handle this?
Well, I believe that there was $100,000 set aside for the Chamber of...
I'm sorry, I'm speaking overall.
Well, overall, well, as we discussed, Commissioners, over the last two weeks, we find ourselves in a, an environment of stagnant growth in revenues at best. In some revenue areas, we anticipate a decrease in revenues, while we're experiencing continued growth in operating cost. It doesn't really take a rocket scientist to understand that no one can continue to operate in that environment unabated. Therefore, after a lot of due consideration with regard to the fiscal health of the county, we have recommended to you each individually these budgets, which represent an across-the-board reduction in the 2003 budget numbers. That starts to bring the county more in line with its predicted resources for the coming year and possibly this year thereafter. Obviously, should we have a better year than planned, that would be welcomed, but I wouldn't anticipate being able to deal much with these numbers, because it still leaves us with some shortfalls in other areas that we can make up for a while, but not forever.
Yes?
It appears to me on page three of eight that we are appropriating for General Fund for the year 2004, $68,000, $68,361,722, correct?
Correct, Commissioner.
Those items that Commissioner Vacy spoke to, they are a part of the overall appropriation?
They would be part of the specific line items, and that's what I inadvertently tried to address. I didn't understand.
Well, and probably you were, but I wasn't hearing what you were saying. Sometimes what you say isn't always what I hear.
In the line item budget, there is a specific line item for a $100,000 allocation to Chamber of Commerce, part of the overall economic development initiative from three years ago on the five-year plan. And I believe that there's $60,000 set aside for... Correct. Labor Relations Consulting within the county, which is a reduction from, I believe, the $90,000 we used this year. This year, the projected $90,000. Right.
And those figures are incorporated in this total?
Yes, Commissioner, they are.
All right, so I guess that I'm interested in the total today. I don't believe that I have any specific exceptions at this point in time. I think this is a working document. From my perspective, it gives us a roadmap of how we can proceed, starting January 1st, and any adjustments that need to be made as we go down the road will have to be made, one way or the other.
Commissioners, I have, I have one request myself. This morning, I received the budget for the coming year for transit. It's pleasing that they're going to continue with their services, as everybody read this morning, but their budget indicates that they're expecting an allocation of $1,400,000 from the Commissioners. In this appropriation, we have allotted $1.2 million to transit. So clearly, their budget's based upon a reduced number. I would ask that we reduce that line item to meet their budget expectations for next year to $1,400,000 rather than the $1.2 million that we have indicated in the appropriation. That's what they budgeted for. I don't want to have to work through hurdles next year if they're not requesting that amount of money, and we ended up appropriating that amount of money.
Oh, the Board will be taking it over next year.
In March, yes, Commissioner.
So if we just leave it in there and we don't spend, it's going to come back to General Fund.
That's fine, too, Commissioner. I was just trying to align what we were appropriating with the expectation of the budget I received from them this morning.
Because we would have to move that additional $200,000 somewhere else, so we would have to deal with that.
$160,000 difference.
Right.
Okay. So you're aware.
Can you also explain what's been going on the last three years with the budget? What we've done?
Well, over the course of the last three years, we've continued to exert pressure, downward pressure on the budget to slow increased operating costs. We've had freezes across the board. We drew our baseline, beginning in 2001, 2002. Really, we haven't seen significant expenditure increases, other than mandated expenses of contracts and healthcare and things like that since about 2001. Last year, we applied additional pressure to the budget with limiting expenses, no dollars were allocated for the purchase of computer equipment. We cut discretionary spending 25%, and we also cut travel 25% in order to try to slow the growth in operating costs and bring it more in line with revenues. While clearly we achieved some success from those initiatives, we have not achieved enough success, and the economy has not picked up to the point where revenue is rebounding to a point where it's going to be able to catch our operating costs. We therefore need to continue bending that operating line. Rather than trying to flatline it, we need to bend it down a little bit to meet the revenue line. The Commissioners have been very good in the last three years of applying pressure, as much pressures as, at that point in time, we believed necessary to achieve successful outcomes. And while clearly we can continue to apply less pressure, I think one day we're going to wake up and we're going to see the headline like we saw in Cleveland, like we knew this was going to be three years ago. I don't want to read that headline. I want to read, "Three years ago, we got our arms around this thing and we made a difference on it."
Well, that's the thing. If Cleveland would have looked at it three years ago, or if the state would have looked at it three years ago, maybe things would have been a little bit different. And the national economy continues, this is its third year of economic decline, and I think it's critically important that we don't wait and then have to have major cuts later, and to avoid bigger problems next year or the year after, or to have to go off for additional taxes. And with the economy and the loss of jobs, I don't think that anybody can afford any additional taxes, and I for one would not ever a vote for an additional tax.
Commissioner, the hardest thing to do is try to push, put downward pressure on a budget while you still are in healthy fiscal condition.
Exactly.
That is absolutely, anybody can make cuts when you have no money, all right? By that time, it's too late.
Right.
It's very hard to do it in a healthy fiscal condition and apply good management principles, because you know what's coming in the next two or three years.
Well, things have gone good for the last 11 years, and this is, we have to keep it that way.
The Board has been generous in years of good revenues as compared to operating costs, and now we all have to share a little bit of bad times.
What it is, is three years planning in advance.
Yes, Commissioner, that's correct.
Any other comments?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
With, I had those two exceptions.
Number 11, reappoint various members of Lorain County Economic and Industrial Development Corporation, effective December 18, 2003, expiring December 31, 2006. Lorain County Commissioners Mary Jo Vacy and David J. Moore, Bruce Stevens, Steven C. Wright, Kurt A. Raich Ravovich, and James Moushary, and also appoint Lorain County Prosecutor Jeff Breen Manning, replacing former prosecutor Greg White.
So moved.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve an intern renewal agreement between Lorain County Board of Commissioners and Maximus Inc., Concord Township, Ohio, for 2003 indirect cost allocation plan in the amount of $17,000. Yes.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the courtroom technology for Lorain County Justice Center. This notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on December 26, 2003, and January 2, 2004. A pre-bid meeting will be held on January 7 at 3:00 p.m. Bids will be opened at 2:00 p.m. on January 21, 2004, in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
I'll second. Discussion.
Yes.
Talk about this a little bit.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I was talking on another issue.
We know. We were paying attention.
Well, Jim, while you're thinking about that, let me ask this question. Yvonne is not here, but do we have to advertise in two newspapers?
I don't believe so, Commissioner. We have a requirement to advertise.
Right, and a general circulation, right?
Correct, and I think, I think it may speak to the, to the local paper with the larger circulation. Some time ago, I remember seeing something like that, and that may not be in the code any longer. I'm sorry, Ms. Newton was out. I asked her to do something.
Well, I could ask Jerry. Jerry, probably.
It's just newspaper of general circulation.
So why are we going to pay for two, two ads?
Normally, the county readership is divided, similar to the Board of Elections, no. But you have, you have divided readership with the Journal and the Chronicle, and we usually had a habit of advertising in both because of...
Yeah, but in that case, Jim, we also have it with these smaller newspapers. Some people don't even get these, these other major newspapers. They just depend on their local little newspapers. So what's the difference? I would suggest that we just use one newspaper. That's my thoughts on it, anyway. Save some money, a lot of money.
Should we, in the spirit of equity, should we rotate them, or should we choose one?
Or should we bid them out?
There, I like that one.
Run an ad of both papers and have them bid?
Yeah.
My life isn't tough enough, is it?
Can we bid this, Jerry?
Well, you don't formally bid, you can request comparative pricing for anything you do.
Let's go for an RFP.
The difficulty gets in comparing it, because you have circulation issues on, so you have equity value comparisons that are difficult to make. One paper may have a distribution, a readership of 50,000, one may have 100,000, so does that mean the one with 50,000 charges us half the price and the one with 100,000? This is a can of worms you may not be able to stuff the worms back into.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
A couple of just thoughts while we're discussing this. I think we used to have a policy of rotating on larger, and I don't remember what it was anymore, maybe it wasn't even a written policy, but on large ticket items like this, it behooves us to advertise in both newspapers to get the most reflective bids that we can, I think, especially something of this magnitude. That'd be my first comment. But secondly, on smaller items, we had rotated, so maybe you'd like to speak to that, Yvonne, the policy that was? And then thirdly, I want to get my plug in for e-commerce. It's coming, and let's pay attention.
Yvonne Newton, purchasing director. Betty is absolutely right. At one time, we were only advertising in one newspaper because it was cheaper to advertise in one newspaper. What I've done, probably for the past two years, is before I even put it in a newspaper, I sent it over to the newspaper, just so that they can give me a price of the ad that's going to be. Unfortunately, one of our newspapers already come in sometimes three times as high as the other one. I've always been, you know, saying that it says advertise in one certain newspaper, and we've always advertised in two, only because I was instructed to advertise at one time and two.
Do you know what, does anyone know what circulation is of either the newspapers?
Well, I'm comfortable saying that the Morning Journal has a larger circulation. I think Commissioner Blair, and I do support your concept, by the way, I wasn't trying to be argumentative.
I understand.
The, I think that on small items, we probably should develop a policy of rotating and who's next, and then on the larger items, just place it in both newspapers.
How large? I mean, what do you consider large?
I'll tell you what we did. Why don't we take it back and get some thought processes going, develop a policy and bring it back to this Board, rather than trying to wing it right here in the hearing room.
Get the circulation.
Okay.
The two newspapers, too, that should be pretty easy.
Okay, no problem.
And do they charge us a flat rate per line, or...
Yes, I, you know what, I really don't know how they charge, because I tell you, sometimes we only have maybe a couple paragraphs, and we still end up, like, rebidding all the copy paper that we did last week. One came in at 175 to advertise, one came in at 364.
For the same?
For the same ad.
Wow.
And there's going to be a 4% increase, starting January 1 also.
Then I think we better start looking into it, because we really dish out a lot to the newspapers.
Let's get together.
They dish a lot out, too, though.
Pardon me? Yeah, they sure do.
Ooh!
It's Christmas.
I know, but they're sitting over there.
Thanks, Jim.
I make sure you're awake over there.
But they're smiling, see? That's, that's good.
Until they write the...
I know. Well, that's okay. That's okay.
Mrs. Vacy?
Well, what do we want to do with this one?
Well, I think you made a, I seconded a motion to advertise for bids as outlined here.
I am prepared to respond to your question on this. You asked if it was something I wanted to say, and I do.
Oh, I was a half hour ago. I forgot about it.
I'm sorry.
I guess that you're confused.
And we haven't even had any eggnog yet.
Ron, are you going to be spending some time making contacts in the community to make sure we get local preference on this? Could your department do that? We talked about this a couple of weeks ago.
About last week, yes.
Was it last week? That seems like so long.
Local preference on my commission.
On this, I mean, just to let, let people know to come in and bid, and I think that's maybe, one of the comments was made in the CIC meeting about, you know, we didn't know this type of product was out there. I just hope the Economic Development Department can be aggressive and maybe pursue...
We're hoping to get a lot of local bids. We have some, you know, some vendors that are local here that work with our 911 equipment or what, that are capable of working with this type of equipment, so we're going to be very aggressive in making sure that they know... very aggressive in making sure that they know that this is out there.
That's all I wanted to know.
Absolutely. The, the, we're also trying to work, just to let you know, we're trying to work on our courtroom benches to have them locally produced here in Lorraine County. So we have a company that can produce them in the city of Lorraine, that can actually do the millwork and build them right over there. We're having some problems with that. Sometimes the law does not allow us to follow our heart's desire with these issues, and we're trying to find a way of complying with both, and I'll be reporting back to you more on that. The courtroom technology bid is pretty much close to being the last piece of the Justice Center, I'm pleased to tell you. It's a large piece. We have worked on it over the course of at least a year and a half. We've had ups and downs, we've had in-betweens with the courts and the judges on it, but I would like to say that through it all, we have been able to remain, remain in a team spirit with them. They've been very cooperative. We, we, they are very close to being within budget needs on expectations. There were some things that they, they really would've liked to have had, but they understood the limitations that we've had. They've worked point-to-point with us to, to control spending on issues, and I'm very, very comfortable. This is another issue that's going to be right there on budget, and, and I wanna thank the courts, and I wanna thank the prosecutors, the clerks, the courts, everybody that worked together on this. It was a very tough issue. And hopefully, we'll get some very competitive bids, and we find some additional dollars, we may be able to do some more stuff. But the courts have been commended to bringing their expectations in, in line with, with the dollars that we had available for this. They, they really struggled with this and helped us.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized salary increases for various employees of Lorraine and Larry Municipal Courts, reflecting the county's two-fifth share, one Donald Rothgeri, Larry Municipal Clerk of Court, effective January 1, 2004, with a bi-weekly rate increase from $1,341.69 to $1,366.33 at an annual salary of $53,524. Stephen W. Vansick, Lorraine Municipal Clerk of Court, effective January 1, 2004, with a bi-weekly rate increase from $1,341.69 to $1,366.33 at an annual salary of $53,524. Also, Thomas Borwich, Bailiff, Lorraine Municipal Court, longevity pay, bi-weekly rate increase from $667.85 to $709.39.
So moved.
I'll second, since this is not something that we have administrative control over.
Any further discussion? Ms. Aftermore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Award various bids for toilet tissues, paper towels, trash liners, and cleaning supplies for Lorraine County Administration Building, Lorraine County Correctional Facility, Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, and Lorraine County Golden Acres Home, County Home. Ralph McGullough, Maintenance Supervisor, Kelly Thompson, Lorraine County Correctional Facility, Mary Ann Belkowiewicz, Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, Bill Glawacki, Administrative Lorraine County Golden Acres, and Yvonne Noon, Purchasing Director, Lorraine County, of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, has reviewed and recommends the following.
I'll stop there.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, it's pretty clear. If you look at the toilet tissues under the Sheriff's Department, here we go, but I was correct this week. There was an error, and that should not have been $10,500 for three, three months. And this shows $15,473.50 for the entire year. So that was either a typo or something, and Yvonne, would you please explain? And I believe that we're gonna have to amend that resolution from last week.
Yvonne Newton, purchasing director, again, it was a error on one of the sheriff's secretaries, instead of taking the unit price off at one and put $3,000, she put a unit at three, and it came up to 10.5. So when I got back to the office, I basically called her and checked, and she, we reduced it, and it was a error, it was a typo.
Yeah, 'cause figuring that out, I think it would've been something like seven rolls of toilet paper for each inmate per day at that cost.
Yeah.
So I, I just thought that, and that's why I asked if there was an error last week.
Yeah, but that's what it was.
Okay. And I think that the Chronicle owes me an apology.
I'd like to speak on that subject also, Commissioner, but I believe last week when we discussed this thing, we said it was a blanket purchase order?
Yeah, for three months.
Which does not mean you have to spend $10,500.
I understand that.
And I tried to explain that to you.
I understand.
If we spend another thousand, then that means 9,500 goes back to the general fund. So there was a clerk where, and I went back, but I guess as an elect, one elected official or another, I would appreciate it if you have a problem with something, that you call me.
Well, I-
And then I could check on it for you, and I will get the answers for you.
The problem wasn't in your department, it was purchasing that made the error.
Yeah, you said it was the sheriff's office where you bought the rec-
Pardon me?
The sheriff's department made the error. We get the requisitions from the sheriff's department, it was their error.
Oh, I thought it was on the purchasing department, that's why I asked last week if it was an error and a typo.
No, because it was, they initially do the requisitions, and we accept the requisitions, and we basically recap them for you. And the error came when she did the requisition.
Well, now that I understand that, if I see that again, I will come to the sheriff's department. I don't have a problem with that.
And that's what I just wanna explain on a blanket. It's not like we went out and bought $10,500 worth of toilet paper, that did not happen.
No, you didn't buy it.
If we use another $1,000 to the end of the year, 9,500 goes back into the account.
I understand that, but I just thought it was excessive and that there was an error, and that's why I questioned it.
Yes, and like I say, if you ever have a problem like that in the future, I'd appreciate you call me, and not my fiscal people, and I'll try to get the answers for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Madam Chair, I move for approval of item number 15, which was partially read by administrate, the clerk, noting that this is broken down into Administration Building, Correctional Facility, Department of Job and Family Services, and Golden Acres for specific amounts to vendors, Mohawk Sales, and Gergleys. Second?
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approved Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes and waived the reading of the same for September 18th and 25th, and October 2nd, 9th, 16th, 21st, 23rd, and 30th, 2003.
Move for approval?
Second?
Discussion?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve an intern to contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Harrison Cultural Community Center, Lorraine, for child daycare service, effective January 1, 2004, through December 31, 2004. Maximum amount reimbursed for children enrolled in the childcare center is based on state reimbursement ceilings, and they are set for the age of the child and the amount of time the child attends the center. Authorize Mary Lou Golsky, Director, to execute necessary documents on behalf of the board with approval of the prosecutor's as to form.
So moved.
Second discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Solid Waste Management District, authorize Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District to apply for a grant from the U.S. Department of Agriculture in the amount of $52,729, to include a local match of $30,350, for a total of $83,079. The local match will be paid from Solid Waste Management Fund for recycling awareness and education program for rural communities in Lorraine County.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
Dan, you wanna say anything about this grant, or? Since you got a nice tie on, you gotta get up on camera.
Good morning, Commissioners, Dan Bilman, Solid Waste Director. This is a USDA grant, which it's a rural development grant. The granting process, the funding that we get, will be put out in the rural community, which is pretty much Route 10 down, so the bigger cities will not get to share in this, but it's a, it's a grant that we have not been able to attain. This time, we did it a little bit differently. We gave them more detail, and I believe that we have a very, very good chance of getting this grant this year. Is there any questions?
Do you have any idea when you'll be hearing about it? Is there a timeframe for them to announce?
I believe it'll be announced in March of this year.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
I think Dave-
I'm sorry, yes.
We're checking up on you, Theresa.
You are paying attention today.
She thought she fooled us.
Already the forgotten Commissioner.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Birthday, David.
It's my birthday.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Lorraine County Children's Services Department to utilize their Shell Oil gasoline credit card not to exceed 200, and the agency's MasterCard not to exceed 2,500 for the year 2003, and the employees will be listed in the resolution.
So moved.
Second discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve an intern to professional engineering services agreement on behalf of Lorraine County Engineer and McCoy Associates, Akron, Ohio, for the improvements of Station Road South resurfacing project. This project will consist of environmental documentation, survey, design, and preparation of construction contract drawings for the improvements to Station Road South, County Road 61, from Cracker Road to State Route 82. The total fee for the agreement is $202,878 to be paid from account 220011102450124, Professional Services.
So moved.
Second discussion?
Mr. Cordes, do you have any comments on this?
No, Commissioner, I don't have any comments at this time, thank you.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Minister?
I have a couple quick issues this morning, Commissioners. First, we have a couple housekeeping matters that we need to take care of as we get close to the end of the year with regards to transfers appropriations. We also need to make some advances now that we know what our appropriations are going to be for next year to continue some agency operations. With that said, I'm gonna ask Mr. Roquessey to come to the podium and read to you some issues that we require a resolution on to continue our operations.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Again, as Mr. Cordes had indicated, these are routine type of things that come in usually in the hubbub of year-end close. I'll be very brief, there's really two requests. The first one was from Shelley Moraro, Assistant Budget Director, to Mr. Cordes and myself, and it states, "During the course of my year-end close process, I discovered several appropriation and advance actions that will require rescinding to enable us to balance various funds. Short letter. Mr. Cordes and I concur with Mrs. Moraro to ask the Board to rescind appropriations number 6, 10, 13, and to rescind number 31 of transfers from the December 4th board meeting." It's in the top sheets, Commissioners, just before, or just after the cover sheet that I had given you. Again, I apologize for this, but these things do come in, and they still will be changing, we will be changing some of the appropriations for this year, and that's why Mr. Cordes last week was granted the permission to make changes after this board meeting and to the end of the year, because these things do come up.
Commissioners, I didn't want to wait until after this board meeting, do we know about it for the board meeting, and obviously, I think it should be addressed by the Board. This is merely accounting procedures. We're, you know, we're down to nickels and dimes in some accounts, and we're moving money back and forth, and we're trying to balance the books, and I think we overdid the job a little bit on a couple of these. So this really doesn't change anything, it just lets us close out our books for the end of the year.
We talked about this this morning, and I understand thoroughly.
That's correct. Right.
All right, I'll so move on this.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Then the, thank you, Commissioners, very much, I appreciate that, my staff does, too. The second final resolution request would be stated as follows. Lorraine County Job and Family Services has requested a temporary advance of $490,441 from the County General Fund to be repaid in January 2004. This, again, would allow for year-end balancing. In order to accommodate this request and allow for the $490,441 reduction in general fund cash, I would propose to the Board that this amount be temporarily reduced from the 2004 general fund budget administrative building account, number 9999, other vital expenditures. This $490,441 will be re-appropriated in 2004. It's a very complex situation. You may wanna read the very last page of the, it's very brief, of the package that I had given you. Again, it's a type of thing, as Mr. Cordes said, where, in this case, we're moving cash, it will be re-appropriated the first day of next year, but it allows the Job and Family Services Unit to, to function with what we call the Certificate of Amended Resources. Complex situation, bottom line, it would be re-appropriated.
Not until our official board meeting?
Correct, it will not be-
I'm out to January 1st.
It'll be available for, for re-appropriation.
Okay, all right.
January 1st. Again, this is to continue operations, it's not an unusual activity. It's a temporary advance. It has a lot to do with their encumbrances, how the encumbrance come back to that, as how it's recognized as non-revenue. So we've done these advances before, and rest assured that the general fund is, is not giving any money out that it won't receive back, and the fiscal health of the Job and Family Services Department is excellent, and so this is, this is just, again, it's accounting.
I'll so move.
Second? Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
The, for the general public, I'd like to notify everybody that the Administration Building, at least most offices in the Administration Building, will be closed on the 24th, the 25th, the 31st, and the 30th. With that said, Commissioners, I was, I was asked by a couple elected officials this morning to at least announce that. I'm not completely sure that every department in this building is closing on the 24th and the 31st, so I have to, I have to go and, and, and talk to a few agencies, specifically Children's Services and the Order's Office, because I'm not sure that they're closing, so I may need to make provisions for the building to be open, but our staff, by contract, will be off. That does not necessarily mean we need to close the building. I can obviously make the necessary arrangements to make sure the building's open, but certain offices in the admin building will be closed on the 24th and the 31st. The buildings themselves will be closed on the 25th and the 1st, that's a certainty. The buildings themselves will be closed on the twenty-fifth and the first, that's a certainty. If the media so desires by this afternoon, I'll have made that contact and I'll know whether anybody's going to be open on the twenty-fourth or the thirty-first with regards to those departments.
Okay.
My other issue is, and somebody really has to do this, I'd like to wish Commissioner Moore a happy birthday.
That was really hard, wasn't it? How'd you guys know it was my birthday?
Because you told us!
You've only been telling us for weeks Commissioner, but that's okay.
It's only posted all over the building.
Yeah, that was a nice doo-doo and I thank whoever did that and I'll find you.
It's not as bad as the Santa Claus picture, but Commissioner Moore is forty-two today, it's his birthday.
Thanks for that.
Paula said I had to tell your age, you did it to her in this hearing room, so we had to do it to you.
If you guys remember my first day, I was in my thirties and I had hair, this is what happens when you sit up here.
Speak for yourself, buddy. You know, don't include all of us in there.
I said me, man.
You said that's what happens when you sit up here, not everybody.
Get gray fast.
I'm sure I
Commissioner Vacy said that.
I'm sure I speak for the staff as a whole and we wish you a very, very happy birthday Commissioner Moore.
Bye, thank you.
I'd also, since this is our last meeting of the year, I wish the residents of Lorain County a safe and happy holiday, the Commissioners a safe and happy holiday, and to the staff a safe and happy holiday. It's been a tremendous year and I'm looking forward to an even better year next year. Thank you Commissioners.
You're welcome.
Jim, were you going to bring up the grant for the development or do you want me to talk about it?
See what happens to you Commissioner, you also get Alzheimer's disease.
Write that down.
Grab Mr. Twining, I apologize.
I was prepared to do this under new business if it didn't get looked up. On Monday of this week, we received the Formula Two Thousand and Three Formula Grant for the Small Cities from the CDBG. This normally is out sometime in late September or early October, this year it is late. And we have been given ten days to have this signed and returned by the State of Ohio. The grant amount is for four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars and the completion date is December of next year, so time is of the essence since you're not meeting again until the twenty-second of January. We've asked Mr. Cordes if we could have a resolution authorizing the President to execute the grant agreement on behalf of Board of Commissioners.
I'll so move.
Second. Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Madam Chair, if I just want to clarify, Mr. Twining's remarks, he says since we're not meeting again until January twenty-second.
Sorry.
We are, well, I don't want people to think that we're not doing anything until January twenty-second. We have our organizational meeting by law on Monday, January the twelfth at nine-thirty AM. Thank you.
Mr. and Assistant County Constable?
I have no report this morning.
Thank you Jerry. Probably afraid to say anything.
I just can't match Mr. Cordes.
Commissioners' report. Commissioner Blair?
Thank you Madam Chair, just echo, what's this Vacy, this Commissioner over here, this guy, happy birthday David and happy holidays to our staff and anybody who's watching, thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Well, thank you for the kind summons. Nice little card here and I thought, wow, I got some cash, four hundred dollars, but then I realized it's W on there, so that's the President, yeah, so yeah.
It's called Bush money.
That's more Bush money I'm getting from you, so I appreciate that, so. You shouldn't have. There's my humor, now let's go back to something serious here. I had the, oh, I don't know which one to call it, luxury? Attending a meeting yesterday in Cleveland with the auditor of the State of Ohio, a committee that represents eight counties, I got to meet several people, I had, there's a lot of issues at the county, I brought up personally to talk to them to see if there's anything they can do to help us out. Reading the paper today, I feel that there is a need now, timing's everything and somehow I've always been lucky with timing, so I learned something in business a long time ago, whether you have, if you have a cash drawer and you're short at the end of the day, you got an issue. If you have a cash drawer and you have a lot of money at the end of the day, that's just as serious as being short. That means there's something wrong and I think there's something wrong at Transit and I would like to have the auditor of the State of Ohio, or at least advise the County Administrator, to call it Jim Penning, he's the chief auditor. And what they do is they do performance audits to see if there is any issues. The fact that they were crying poor all year and they say they have a half a million extra, fifty percent of their budget scares me, makes you wonder for the last ten years how much extra money they have had. The undue pressure that was being put on both sides, I think was no longer necessary had they been, I don't know whether if there's an issue with their books or not, but it seems like to me all this could have been avoided had they been upfront with the cash that they had. I do not know if that's true, that they have excess cash, and I feel that the state of, the auditor of the State of Ohio should come in here. They have a flat rate of thirty-five dollars a hour and they will do an academy of scale and a performance audit. And what I like about this and going with an independent, it's called an IPA, an independent public accountant, is they work for the government and they'll be looking for certain things that most private people don't understand in government. And I would feel a lot more secure taking over or having Transit come over underneath the Commissioners if we had something from the State of Ohio auditor saying that the books are fine. Just because there's extra cash doesn't mean everything's fine, just the opposite. I'm more concerned now wondering what else is wrong.
But Jim, excuse me.
I'm just wondering if it'd be okay to have Jim contact these people. Right now with the holidays, it might take a while, but all they will do is come up and give us a quote on how much it would cost and what they will do for us, we might not want to do it. But at least we'll have somebody on the outside come in and give us a quote and maybe we might have to use an independent private accounting firm, but in the meantime, the state's available for free to come on up, give us a quote with their cost and just wondering if you guys would support something like that.
Dave, John, Jim and I talked about this during the week and I agree with you, I think we do need an exit audit and we talked about different firms, we talked about the state. John did some research on it and, John, what did you come up with?
I have a call-in Commissioner, I've been playing telephone tag with a firm in Cleveland, it could be one candidate for the Board to choose and the man has not returned.
We were, we were looking to gain a proposal, we have to do a transition audit, obviously. We were looking to gain a proposal from Delorent Toch, I believe it was.
Delorent Toch, right.
But the state orders would be
At least have them come in, just have them come in and do a proposal.
Right, right.
They might not fit, we might not use them.
Actually, at thirty-five dollars an hour, I think that's going to be very, very competitive.
Well, all I'm saying is that if you read the papers today in the Journal regarding the city of Lorain, it's a lot of work to do something like that and I think I don't want to wait till March first, I'd prefer to see if we can get something going now.
What those comments said Commissioner, if I may add to that, for the record, I wasn't personally disappointed that Transit had found additional resources and were able to continue services as Director Moore said.
Not just the opposite, I think it's
What I was disappointed in is that I thought we were doing something that, and I had relayed to this Board that we were doing something over there that apparently wasn't being done and I didn't know what to tell this Board. And they're trying to act as a relay's on for you and that's what I was disappointed in, not that services weren't going to be cut. So I wasn't going to speak to it, but for the record, what was printed today, what I supposedly said through somebody else was an inaccurate representation of the facts.
You said all that?
I said less than that.
You said, hey, it wasn't right.
But we do need to, anytime we take over an operation, we did an audit on WDA, this is not anything that wouldn't be standard, if you recall, we brought in orders to do that.
An exit audit.
But what happened was, the only difference was we did that immediately as we were doing it. What I'm saying is we have till March, I don't want to wait till March, I prefer to start getting the proposals in now and see, we might have to add different types of audits too. This is just something for, it's just a performance audit, we might need, you know, we might need something else. Who knows what keeps coming up.
So it's best to start it right away as soon as possible.
Well, we're not meeting till January twelfth, at least, that gives us enough time, maybe by that organizational meeting that Jim would have some from the private firms, some from the auditor. We should have something by their next meeting instead of waiting another, it's close to a month away. That's all, I mean, it doesn't take, I just want to make sure you guys, it sounds like the Board's supportive of getting somebody
Commissioner Blair, do you support that?
I think that's part of what Mr. Cordes was going to recommend to us in the orderly process. In the orderly taking over of the business, at least that was my understanding.
It may be good, we're at the end of the year, so it may be a good time to start that process.
Was my understanding correct that you were going to recommend this to the Board?
Eventually, yes ma'am, I was.
Okay, we had a discussion about it. I just want to clarify my understanding.
But there should be a reason why we shouldn't have proposals by January second.
I agree with you, Commissioner, if you pass that to me, I will ensure that that gets taken care of.
But that's not just from them, you're getting proposals.
You're getting others too, so.
So you'll have several to choose from, we will have several to choose from?
Well, right now we have two, I guess I could see a few other.
That's two, several, I don't know, well, more than one, how's that?
That's great.
Okay.
What if we were to use the company that's auditing their books now since they're familiar with it?
Well, that's the company out of Cleveland that we contacted because they, to get a proposal from.
You mean they're already doing their books?
They've already, they've provided work to them in the past, they're familiar with the operation.
Call-in too.
I'd prefer to have somebody totally unrelated, after what I've been reading, that's just my personal opinion.
I understand Commissioner. We'll bring you back to information as I had in an expeditious manner. Let me ask you this, since the Board's not meeting, you know, again, in an official, well, not an official, but your organizational meeting is at official capacity, do you want me to work with you individually on gaining some desired outcome in this so we can get started earlier than the twenty-second of January?
We can do this on the twelfth, it'll be a public meeting.
Okay, so Mr. Roca, so you and I need to be prepared to go forward on the twelfth with some issues with the Board, okay?
Good.
We might not make a decision, but I'd just like to see what you got, quicker the better.
Yes sir, I understand your desire.
Okay.
That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, I just have one thing. Ron, I think I'm going to refer this to you, but I was thinking, I talked to somebody in Lorain about this and I'd like to hear your thoughts on it, but I think if we were to look into a customs office at the port in Lorain or talk to the Port Authority in Lorain and with our Port Authority, you know, with the lake here, if we were to have a customs office in Lorain County, I think we would create a lot of jobs and everything seems to be exporting, importing.
If you want to
What are your thoughts on that?
If you don't mind me saying something, I've been checking with the airport because that's where it would be more appropriate, that's where they have one in Sandusky like that.
But I'm thinking it would have to be
I'm just trying to help him, if you would talk to the airport, maybe Sandusky, they already have a customs office there too.
But I think it would have to be at, by the lake.
Well, I don't know, give them something to do for the holidays.
Typically, the Department of Customs is who will allow goods entering this country. It's either an airport or a water port are the two most common areas that you'd have a customs office. There is a customs office with the Cleveland Port Authority, we have a memorandum of understanding with the Cleveland Port Authority, so I'd have to check into just exactly what the ramifications there are, but I'd be more than happy to check as long as we could check both on the two points of entry, both the airport and the water port, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think years ago when I used to import, that the port, it was, the customs office was in Cleveland and it was along the lake.
And they still have a large presence in the Cleveland Port itself, so
I think most of it
There may be a prohibition, but I'm not sure, but we'll check that out, we are in the process now of working right now and making our second general purpose foreign trade zone application and have been talking with both Cleveland Port Authority and the Department of Commerce, so we can easily pursue this.
Can I interject?
Sure.
I obviously have another piece of business here I was going to bring up on the new business and that is the letter for the Commissioners to sign for the foreign trade zone. Commissioners, this is what Mr. Twining's speaking to, it requires support signatures from each Commissioner, it directly has a nexus to your issue Commissioner with regard to these duty frees and so forth. If you want to give it a brief explanation, I'd
Well, we haven't had a chance to see this yet.
What you have in front of you is a, we have a company identified in the city of North Ridgeville that could take advantage of a foreign trade zone because they ship products in from France in particular that they're paying tariffs on or duties on. And if we have a foreign trade zone that they're a part of and later activate, then those could come in duty-free to the United States, they could be assembled in component pumps and then be shipped back overseas duty-free. If they're sold after-assembled here in North Ridgeville, if they're sold domestically, then there would be a tariff placed on that. What we have in front of you is a part of this company's application is a identified district that takes part of North Ridgeville and part of the Aliria Industrial Park by Taylor Woods. And we're asking to make an application on behalf of a company in North Ridgeville to establish a foreign trade zone. We've been out and we've worked on this for about two years now, but we were out a week ago Wednesday, last night, to the Aliria School Board explaining it to them, looking for a similar letter of support. And then Tuesday night Rebecca Jones and I went to the North Ridgeville City School District and talked and explained it to them, looking for a letter of support. Final comment I have is we do have letters of support coming from both the mayors of Aliria and North Ridgeville. We're asking that the Commissioners endorse this as well, it's the same thing you did in Vermillion.
I think that would bring in, if we could have a customs office, I think that myself preferably by the lake because I'm thinking that most of the merchandise or anything that comes in would come in through ship and I'm thinking, you know, warehousing and, but your thoughts are that we have some kind of agreement with Cleveland?
We have a memorandum of understanding, at least in terms of foreign trade zone, and that directly links us to the US Department of Commerce, so I would just need to make sure that, you know, we're not already covered by the Cleveland office and a few things like that, but I'd be happy to do that.
Wasn't the Lorain, didn't we meet with the Port Authority and their Community Development Department, aren't they interested in, I'm trying to remember that company's name, Neo?
Neotec?
Neotec.
I think it was Neotec.
Were they doing some activity up there with the city of Lorain and possibly putting in the zone that Commissioner Vacy was speaking to, because they have had, they've spoken of the same issue up in Lorain with us.
I think it would be through the customs department.
They were proposing to do that work, I don't think that's gone forward, but
By the way, you have to check and see if we can or can't, so.
And also, while you're checking, see if we can do it in both locations, along the lake and with, use the airport also.
Right.
I don't know if the customs office would have two locations in one county, but
What they define it as is points of entry and if goods are shipped in, then that would be a point of entry, not at a water port, but an airport, so I can tell you that it's going to be both locations if we are able to do it.
And is this, and you got the city of North Ridgeville and Aliria to agree to this trade zone?
Yes.
Is that from the meeting that, is that from the original meeting we had?
We've had three meetings.
I'm talking about with Rebecca?
Yeah, you were at the first meeting and we've had three since and then we've had with the school boards, these are
It's been taking a while.
Labor-intensive processes.
But I would like to commend you and your staff and especially Robin for her work on that, because that was, the boxing gloves were on right away from the city officials, so you must have done a very good job if you got them all on board.
Rebecca has worked very hard on this and so has the folks from Cleveland Port Authority. We do not yet have letters from the school districts, so I don't want to say that this is moving forward, but yeah.
Well, it seems like it's moving forward, it's You've got a letter.
Just one minute, but what I'd like to do also is give a special thanks to all the elected officials and the department heads all through the county for helping the county commissioners to keep within the budget last year and throughout all the years, because we really have to commend them, without their assistance, I don't know where we would be financially, but, you know, it's been, it's been great working with them and I once again want to commend them and thank them. And Merry Christmas everyone, Happy Holidays. That's all I have.
Were you guys going to do anything with this application for North Ridgeville?
No, no, we don't
No, we signed the letter.
Okay.
I just thought of a perfect opportunity here.
Okay. Is there any old business?
None.
I have none.
I have none. Under to the new business that was mentioned already, but Monday, January twelfth, two thousand and four, nine-thirty, the Commissioners will have their organizational meeting and then on January twenty-second at nine-thirty, the first Board Meeting will take place. Board correspondents?
We'll be reading your way of
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Public comment?
Mr. Kish.
Sorry, Bob, I just saw that you're
Fish.
Reference customs, sorry.
That's all right, just pass it on, then we don't
No, reference customs, as an FAA controller, if you came into Lorain County Airport, you had to arrange for customs to come from Cleveland to meet your aircraft and you were supposed to stay in the plane. Now, as far as boats coming to harbor, they know when the boats are coming in, I imagine they, and the biggest surprise I got, I flew from Frankfurt to Toronto, Toronto to Cleveland, I went through US Customs, US officials at Toronto Airport. It was a real surprise. Okay, now I'm starting, that was had to do with him. It came, with my apologies to the carolers in this community, it came upon the midnight clear, the stars were shining brightly, it was a night a bearded, bedraggled man could find no bed at the inn. So he lay huddled, no straw for his bed, in a hole in the ground in Iraq. So it is written that this man was rescued by the US Army from his humble hole, Saddam. A Latin proverb says, beware the tyranny of the minority, and I had read that many times and I had thought the tyranny at times is located at the top because we have a quarter million people that represented a top by three, they make the decisions, we are the underdogs. But I now realize there is another minority that lives amongst us. And I became aware of this when I went to a school play for children right here in Lorain Lorraine County, where the word "Christmas" was never mentioned in the play. So, I was, how would I say, offended. My turn. As far as the troops in Iraq, what I've read at the Veterans Memorial has been all talk and no substance for 10 years. It would appear that if Aliria City has its way, there will never be a veterans monument downtown. In that regards, they are also against parking on lawns. I have a partial solution, compromise. Require the county to replace the west lawn of the courthouse, the old Justice Center, with a green space lawn. Then, at county expense, place the six service flags there, plus a taller U.S. flag centered